My name is Dee Oliver. Our Chair Bob Thornton is out of town today, so I will be filling in for him. And so bear with me as we move through this place. Before we get started, I've asked Commissioner Redman to lead us in prayer. And this will be followed by the pledge. Commissioner Hornsley.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We'll all bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for your guidance and wisdom. As we begin this hearing today, guide our hearts and our minds in a spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Help us to remember your responsibility to serve our community with great insight guided by your understanding, wisdom, and respect for all. As we make decisions today, help us to promote the common good as we work together for the betterment of our great city. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Redman and Commissioner Hornsley. I've asked Commissioner Weiner to please introduce the members of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver. Starting on the far end over there, we have Kay Wilson. Kay is our City Attorney. The first empty chair is Jack Wall. Jack is a civil engineer and he represents the Roseholden District. Next is Dr. Karen Kwanzi. And she is a professor of literature and she represents the Princess Anne District. Next is Don Horsley. Don is a farmer. And Don is at large. Next is Ron Ripley. Ron is in real estate management and he is at large also. Next is Jan Rosinski. I still consider Jan our Secretary of the Planning Commission. And she is in property management and she represents the Centerville District. The empty seat is Bob Thornton. Bob is our Chairman of the Planning Commission. And he's in sales and leasing and he represents the Lynnhaven District. Next is Dee Oliver. Dee is a funeral director and she is our Vice Chairman of the Planning Commission. And she is at large. Sitting next to Dee is Jeff Hodson. Jeff is in real estate management and he represents the Beach District. Next is Mike Edman. Mike is an attorney and he is at large. My name is David Weiner. I'm in commercial sales and I represent the Kempsville District. Sitting next to me is Dave Redman. Dave is in commercial real estate and he represents the Beach District. And next is Barry Frankenfield. And Mr. Frankenfield, would you please introduce your staff?
Well, thank you very much. It takes four people to replace Ed, so I have four people over here that I'm going to introduce that are doing the agendas and the voting. But part of this is we are working on a new system to coordinate with the City Clerk. And we're going to electronically integrate all of our agendas and all of our forms. So we're training a lot of people to be able to manage that effort when we get there. So always trying to move ahead. So Delina Cartwright, Cole Fisher, Carol Dozier, Pam Sandloop are the -- for lack of a better term, the voting team. And on the planning bench, we have Kevin Kemp, Ashby Moss, Carolyn Smith, Jimmy McNamara. No. Right? Okay, Jimmy McNamara. I always forget somebody. This is my hardest part. I usually write it down. Robert Davis and Michelle Coleman. All right, got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The first order of business is the explanation of the rules we use to run the meetings. And Commissioner Rosinski, our secretary is going to explain the rules to you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the Commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat the Commission and members of the public with respect and civility. The Commission requests that if you have a cellphone, please silence it or turn it off at this time. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. A complete set of the rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission agenda for today. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The Chairman will ask if there is a request for an item to be withdrawn or deferred on the agenda. Consideration of these requests is made first. Consent agenda. The second order of business is the consent agenda, which are those items which the Planning Commission believes are unopposed and have favorable staff recommendation. Regular agenda. The Commission then proceeds with the remaining items on the agenda. Please note that action taken here today is in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision for approval or disapproval for any application is made by City Council. The Commission thanks you for your attendance. We hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling like you have been treated fairly and heard. Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business is to address the items that will be deferred or withdrawn. Do we have any items that need to be withdrawn? No. And so we have four items that need to be deferred. So the Chair is aware of these. And this is item number three, four, D2, and 10. Is there any opposition to these items being withdrawn?
Deferred.
Mm-hmm. Deferred. Deferred, sorry. All right. May I have a motion on these items to be deferred?
I'd like to make a motion to defer items three, four, 10, and D2.
And a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Vice Chair -- well, actually Commissioner Hodson. Seconded by Commissioner Rosinski. All right.
Vote is open.
Call for the question.
By a vote of nine to zero, the items three, four, 10, and D2 have been deferred.
Great, thank you. The next order of business will be to address those that have been placed on the consent agenda. And Commissioner Hodson's going to handle this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Miss Stand-in Chairman. This afternoon, we have three items on the consent agenda. The first matter is Agenda Item Number Six, which is an application of Waves Motel, Inc. for a conditional use permit, commercial parking lot on property located at 1312 Atlantic Avenue, which is in the Beach District. Is there a representative here for this application? Could you please come forward? It'd be painless. How could you state your name for the record, please?
Antigone Chivides.
Hi, Helen Annoya.
Have you seen the conditions?
Yes.
And they acceptable?
We have some questions. Well, not so much questions, but we don't oppose your recommendations for us making our property into a parking lot. However, our intention is not to be a parking lot. We would like to develop our property accordingly instead of underdeveloping it. And that's why we're asking for this conditional use permit for this season only.
Okay. But you're okay with the conditions as stated in the staff report?
We understand what they are and we're not opposed to that. But that would lock us into being a parking lot. We don't want to continue for the next few years as a parking lot because then the property would be underdeveloped.
I believe we're going to have to pull you off the consent and hear this.
Okay. Do we have the City Staff that will be reviewing that? Maybe we're not understanding.
Right now, you've been put on the consent agenda as if you're in agreement with all the terms that are listed.
Oh, yeah, yes. Yes.
I'm sorry. That is true. We do understand and we do agree to. We don't oppose those recommendations.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, good. All right.
You can be seated. All right. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the Chairman has requested that Mr. Ron Ripley please review this application.
This application is an application for a commercial parking lot. And it was used last year as a parking lot. And under the zoning ordinance, it can only be used for one year before it receives it needs a conditional use permit. And that's why this is occurring. The -- I don't think the -- not going to speak to the law, but I don't think the applicant's tied into this just being a parking lot forever. I think they have every right under the sun that's in the ordinance to proceed to develop the property at a later date that their desire. So I don't think that that'll be a problem to the applicant. But it used to be occupied by the Golden Sands Hotel. It was demolished in 2016. Like I said, it was used as a parking lot last year. So here, we're addressing it as a commercial parking lot. And it meets most all the requirements, if not most all of them, right now with landscaping. There's a fence that has to be removed. It's paved. Depending on how much that can be modified, that's something I think the City will try to work with the applicant on. But there are nine conditions and the applicants accepted these conditions at this point. And so the Planning Commission felt it should be on consent and is recommended for approval by the staff. So that's why we put it on consent.
Thank you, Mr. Ripley. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Nine, which is a resolution to schedule monthly meetings of the Planning Commission of the City of Virginia Beach for May 2018 to April 2019. And being that this is coming from the City, Ms. Oliver has asked Ms. Wilson to please review this.
This is a resolution of the Planning Commission only that would allow any meeting that has to be rescheduled because of weather or other emergency would allow that meeting's agenda to be placed on the next meeting's agenda without further advertising. It's a cost-saving measure. It also deletes the August meeting of the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission will not meet in August.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this being put on the consent agenda? I should ask first. All right. The next item is Agenda Item Number D1. This is an application for Dragus Associates, Inc. for a conditional change of zoning, R10 residential to conditional A24 apartment on property located at the southwest corner of Haygood Road and Wesleyan Drive. And this is in the Bayside District. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Hodson. Madam Chair, for the Commission for the Record, Eddie Bredon, Jimmy's Attorney. We greatly appreciate all the hard work from City Staff on this application, as well as the civic leagues in the area with whom my clients have met and spent considerable time with, and appreciate being on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this matter being on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Oliver has asked Mr. Dave Redman to please review this application.
Thank you, Mr. Hodson. Mr. Chairman, this is an assemblage of 12 vacant parcels totaling almost nine acres in a neck of the woods with which anybody around there will be familiar with these properties. And this part of the city has enjoyed, I think, quite a bit of momentum in the last 10, 15 years. And I think this is a continuation of it. This is a rezoning to A24 Apartment District for the development of 88 units in 22 quad buildings in a condominium form of ownership. So ownership product, not rental product. And while a rezoning to conditional A24 Apartment District is requested, the resulting density will only be 9.84 units to the acre. The request for A24 is driven by the amount of lot coverage permitted. For example, in the A12 and A18 districts, lot coverage is limited to 40% and 50% respectively. But as depicted, the anticipated lot coverage here will be 52%, thereby necessitating the rezoning to A24, which permits a higher lot coverage, 60%. This development has a number of amenities: a community pool, pond, a walking path. And a particular note, at least to my eye, is very intense landscaping. And if you're familiar with the applicant's work just up the street, I think you can expect some of the highest quality landscaping in the city, very frankly. I believe this will be a great asset and a fine community when it's done. We are unaware of any opposition to the application. Staff supports it and the Commission concurs. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Redman. Ms. Oliver, that was the last item on the consent agenda. I'd like to move to approve Agenda Items Six, Nine, and D1.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? Thank you.
Vote is open.
Okay.
By a vote of nine to zero, the Agenda Items Six, Nine, and D1 have been approved by consent.
All right. Before you all depart, I just would like to thank the applicants that all had a matter on the consent agenda. Thank you for coming down for today's hearing and have a good day. So the next order of business will be addressing the remaining matters on our agenda. So would the Clerk of the Commission please call the first?
So this afternoon, we have five items being heard by the Planning Commission. The first item is going to be Agenda Item Number One, Evergreen Virginia LLC. And this is an application for modification of conditions for motor vehicle sales, rentals, and repair, and car wash facility on property located at 296 Kings Grant Road and 2981 3001, 3025, and 3033 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Beach District.
Thank you very much, Members of the Planning Commission for the record, Billy Garrington. On behalf of the applicant, Evergreen Virginia LLC, which some of you probably, if you've visited the site, will recognize this, the Checkered Flag family of auto dealerships. So I thank you for trying to put this on consent agenda. And unfortunately, I was the one that pulled it off. So I have nobody to blame but myself, but I'm just trying to get my billboard hours a little bit higher. Thank you for, again, trying that. But the one condition that I would like to ask for some relief or to be eliminated entirely is Condition Number 14. As it is written now, Condition Number 14 will effectively put them out of business. Because what it says is that we can't offload cars on the city right-of-way. We have to do it on-site, and we can't impede traffic at any time. It says that we can't back the new car carriers onto the site. So that means that we can only pull them onto the site, which means that you then are going to effect back it back out into the Boulevard, which is going to impede traffic and cause more of a traffic hazard than it would if you only take one lane of the highway and offload the cars with someone out there assisting the truck driver. And keep in mind, these car dealerships never know when these car -- these caravans are going to show up. You know about it about 10 minutes after the guy arrives, when he walks into the service department and says, "I've got a load of new vehicles for you here. We're here to offload them." So that's the advance notice you get. Sometimes they even come on Saturdays and Sundays when the dealership's not even open. So I didn't want to agree to a condition that would put them in jeopardy of losing their use permit somewhere down the road that needs to be revised or it needs to be done in a manner that it won't put them in direct conflict with their use permit. And that's what I'm here to ask you for today. Other than that, it's a very simple application. All they're doing is increasing the parking and the display area that they have for a dealership this now, which will now be -- it won't be Hyundai anymore. It will be a Jaguar and Land Rover or so. But again, it's been there for many years. When the Boulevard was widened and you took the feeder roads away, you have effectively put every car dealership that's on the Boulevard in the same position. And to say that they can't impede traffic at any time is going to be a problem, and they could effectively lose their license.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
So have they been offloading vehicles now by just parking in the street and?
Just like every other car dealer on the Boulevard. There's nowhere else to do it. Typically, sometimes depending on the time of day or how busy it is, they will pull onto Kings Grant Road, which is the side street that goes up into the office area because it's a less congested road. Most of the time, they'll pull up and take the right-hand lane of Virginia Beach Boulevard. They'll have a lot attendant come out there and assist them to help direct traffic. And they get the cars off as quickly as they can so he can go on about his business and go on to his next destination. But again, it says that we can't impede traffic at any time. If we try to back that truck out, those trucks are 18-wheels and they're 64 feet long. If you try to back it out into the Boulevard, you're going to significantly impede traffic and cause -- it's going to be a hazard that you don't want to have happen.
Go ahead. Ron?
Bill, how are they offloading them now?
Like I just said, they pull up and they park in the right-hand furthest-most lane of Virginia Beach Boulevard, right in front of the dealership, offload them as quickly as they can, and then the truck goes on about his business.
Okay.
But he is in effect impeding traffic if he does that.
So they don't pull onto the site and offload at all?
The problem is pulling onto the site, they would have to back back out into Virginia Beach Boulevard with a truck that's 60-some feet long, which would create a tremendous, tremendous safety issue.
So how long are they there? You said a brief period. What would you call?
30 minutes.
30 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Tom, you had a question?
No, I was just going to ask about the time that it usually takes. And you said about 30 minutes.
They get them off there just as quickly as they can because that new car carrier normally has vehicles that are going to other dealerships too. So the quicker he can get them, the quicker he can get from that site, the better off it is.
And to have a space on your own property large enough to do this and turn these vehicles around would be -- I know how much space it takes for those things.
Oh, my gosh, it would take a -- you couldn't do it in a cul-de-sac. I mean, that's just how big those trucks are.
Yeah, you wouldn't -- it would take a large part of your parking area to do that inside. I can understand that.
Commissioner Redman?
I have a question. I'm not sure exactly for whom. I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea of removing this condition without some consideration from traffic engineering or something. I mean, you know, impeding traffic or not impeding traffic is not the kind of issue that I kind of want to make up while we're sitting here. And I think, I mean, I understand exactly, Mr. Garrington, what you're saying. I think that probably, in my view anyway, might require some more consultation before we just decide to pull it out of here.
Okay.
Or not pull it out of here. And I am not a fan, by and large, of deferrals for deferral's sake. But I just don't know I'm comfortable pulling that out of there without knowing any more than I do, Mr. Garrington. And I think that's something that probably there was some discussion about, but we haven't been party to that discussion. I don't know what any other kind of precedent is. Is this common in dealerships like that? I'm a little bit wary of doing that. I even made Barry get up and walk away. But so anyway, that's -- if you would chew on that for a little bit, that might just be above my pay grade.
Well, I understand your concern.
Without some consultation.
But I can tell you that I have done use permits for every other car dealership up and down the Boulevard. Every one of them do exactly what we're doing now. And I don't want to mention them by name because I don't want to get any of them into a situation. But once the feeder roads went away, you have nowhere else that these cars can be offloaded. Not a single dealership has room enough to get those trucks on-site and then back back out into the Boulevard. It just doesn't happen.
Commissioner Redman?
I'm wondering, has this condition ever been put in another -- this is a staff question. Ever been put in another conditional use permit?
Not that I'm familiar with.
It has. And so is staff familiar with the issues that Mr. Garrington's asking or commenting about where many dealerships have to do what would need to be done here if this condition went in there?
Yes, it is, we believe, City Code. City Code does.
Not really.
No.
City Code prohibits offloading of vehicles in the public right-of-way. So if that's the case, then?
If you want to put on there to the greatest extent practicable or something like that, I can agree with that. But I'm just -- the only thing I'm saying is that the way it is written right now, all somebody has to do is see them impeding traffic one time.
Right.
And they say that you're not complying with the conditions of your use permit.
Commissioner Weiner?
If another car dealership was down the road doing it and an inspector came by, he would probably cite them also, wouldn't he? So I mean, it's not?
Not if it's not a condition of his use permit.
Yes.
That could very well be the issue. So again, if you would just put on our -- if you can put some verbiage on there towards to the greatest extent practicable or under only extreme circumstances, but the way it's written right now, I think it's going to present a problem.
Hold on one second. Kevin? Do you -- oh, Carolyn.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
So they do with proper notice can apply with a traffic control plan through traffic engineering to close a portion of the street in order to accomplish that. But the scenario that Mr. Garrington described is not permitted.
Okay. Yes.
I don't see how we can do anything other than what the way it's written. It's the code. So, you know, he's got a problem. I understand that.
We will agree with the conditions and we will work with traffic engineering between now and City Council and see what we can figure out.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for.
No. Always good to work through these things. All right.
Can I ask?
Yes, absolutely.
Kevin? Kevin, do you know if anybody's ever been cited for unloading cars like this on public roads?
Not from the Planning Department because this is in the public right-of-way and we do not enforce that.
Police Department issue.
So it'll be a police department issue. So, you know, it's kind of like the same thing as if a truck had a flat tire and had to pull off the side of the road, he'd be there longer than that. And I'm sure these guys -- but I understand Mr. Garrington's situation. And but I understand what our ordinance is also. So I trust that he will get it worked out before Council with maybe Mr. Loman or somebody.
All right. Yes.
I move we approve the?
I believe the applicant would like to speak in opposition.
In support of her.
The applicant's motion.
He just did. Okay. All right. Commissioner Redman?
You have to close the public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Bear with me. The hearing's now closed and we're just going to open it up. Discussion amongst the Commissioners. Anybody have anything? Yes.
I move we approve the application.
I second it.
Okay. Commissioner Redman makes the motion and Commissioner Hornsley?
The vote is up.
Do the second.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
I need to disclose that the applicant's indicated Town Bank is his lender. And I'm a member of the Town Bank Advisory Board in Chesapeake. And I have a letter on file associating it. But I don't have any relationship here. I don't have any interest in the property. So I will be disclosing it. I will be voting, but I don't have any interest. And I'm disclosing this.
Thank you. All right. Call for the question? The vote is up.
By a vote of nine to zero, the Agenda Item One, Evergreen Virginia LLC, has been approved.
All right, thank you. With the Clerk of Commission, call up the next.
So our next item of business is going to be Item Number Two, 23rd Fund Parking LLC. This is an application for alternative compliance at the northwest corner of Pacific and 23rd Street in the Beach District. Is there a representative for this application? You can please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Stan Baraki. I'm the agent for the applicant. My business address is 800 Juniper Crescent in Chesapeake, Virginia.
Thank you.
On behalf of my client, I'm respectfully requesting your approval for this application. This application is for -- I'll give you a little bit of history before we go to the application. My client bought this property back in '91, I guess. And the property has previously been -- has conditional use permit to operate as a commercial parking prior to '91, I believe in '88. The property was operated as a conditional -- I mean, as a gravel parking for a couple years before my client purchased it. Then my client sold it a few years past that, and he sold the property. The gentleman who bought the property defaulted on the loan. My client basically self-financed the property. And the gentleman who bought it defaulted on the loan. So my client took it back about six years ago. And it's been vacant since and trying to develop it and trying to develop the property. And they have several prospect buyers to buy it, and nothing happened at this point. So they, instead of keeping it as a vacant property, they felt that there is a need for additional parking at the Beach. And they provided a, you know, they thought about putting a commercial parking on there. The property, and one of the reasons, another way, is there was a couple years ago, I guess another way, is there was a couple of years ago, I guess somebody, they had no, big no parking sign on the property. Somebody went there, I guess in a busy weekend, took the non, a non-parking sign and flipped it and put beach parking and start parking people in there. And so my client actually called the police. Somebody called my client and said, hey, somebody parking on your property. So my client called the police and have them, you know, stop the, the, this. This park, this property, people park in there even though there is about six, seven signs, I counted, no parking on the, on this piece of property. But people yet still jump the curb and park there. So with this proposal, we have been working with staff, you know, and I thank staff for their diligent work. And we have been working with staff to come up with a, a good solution to a problems. And we get, we get a good solution to make this a win-win for everyone. This parking lot will be managed and run by Wayne Gibson, who has run parking lots at the beach for years. And he's running one right now on Twenty-Ninth Street. And there was no issues with any of the parking he has ran. And we understand that the neighbor to the north, the hotel on the north, concerned about noise and at night, a noise on, on this piece of property. So we have been working with staff to come up with a solution to reduce the noise by creating a buffer between the, this parking and, and the hotel on the north. I believe staff recommending ten-foot buffer with a fence. And my concern was, when I talked to staff originally, we were talking about privacy fence on that. My concern, we creating an alleyway for people to hide between the building, the wall on the north and the fence, and creating an alleyway for people to hide in. And so staff said, how about if we use a wrought iron type fence? But that's not gonna solve the issue of the noise. So the, my recommendation would be is to put in a privacy fence at the property line, eight, go up eight feet at the property line. That prevent noise from, a lot better than the, just a landscaping and wrought iron fence in there or picket fence, if the noise is the issue. We understand and we are, and my client is very sensitive to the neighbor. And we wanna work with the neighbors. We're not trying to say, hey, look, you know, this is, you know, we're trying to come up with solution to the issues. So with that, I went back to staff, talked to them as late as just before the meeting. And we agreed that, okay, we'll go with a ten-foot landscape buffer and a four-foot fence. But in my view, that's not gonna prevent noise from traveling, even if we have shrubberies there. And this is what we're gonna put in landscaping and shrubberies there. That's not gonna prevent the noise from traveling. I think fence, six or eight foot, privacy fence at the property line with a probably three or, three or to five foot landscaping between the two properties, that serve a lot better. And so serve the neighbor to the north a lot better than a, just a ten-foot landscape buffer. But if the commission feel that's not a reasonable request, we agreeing to the ten-foot. So we wanna work, you know, we, we are not here to make issues. We're here to work with the neighbors to, to come up with the best solution possible. And my client also is still in the pursuit of finding other options to develop the property in the near future. So that's why we didn't have any issue, any problem with any of the condition imposed on this application or staff recommendation. We concur with them with the exception of the buffer on the north. And I'm, I'm offering an option, but if, if the commission feel that option is not reasonable by installing six to eight foot fence at the property line and a three foot or five foot landscape buffer from the property line to the fence, then I'm okay with staff recommendation. And I will stand by to answer a question or...
Thank you. Yes, Ron.
Sparaki, what, what kind of noise do you anticipate, other than just cars parking? What kind of noise could you, what kind of noise are they experiencing that's an issue here?
What the, what my understanding was, it's not just the car parking. It's people coming in at night from bars and, you know, and being loud.
I see.
And, and that's happening whether, you know, the, the bars there. And to me, if you are at Pacific Avenue or Atlantic Avenue, when people leave the bars, two o'clock in the morning, they coming out and laughing and walking and talking and everything. So whether you have a parking there or not, the noise is there.
Yeah.
So I, but, you know, we're trying to be reasonable. We're trying to come up with, okay, if this is the issue, how we could resolve it.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
It might be for staff also asked me this, I think a ten-foot fence might be a security reason why that couldn't happen. And not a ten, eight-foot privacy fence?
Yes, that was one of the reasons that we were recommending the wrought iron style, the aluminum wrought iron style, because you can see through it, but it's also a barrier. It wouldn't be as good as, in order to block noise, but that's not the only concern.
Sure. Okay. It's more of a security thing than anything.
Yeah, I mean, like I, I mentioned to Ashby, I'm, I'm okay with, I mean, my understanding originally that the noise was the issue. And if the noise is the issue, then, you know, the privacy fence is a, is a better solution. Because the last thing I wanna do is create an alley for people to hide and, in there. So a picket fence is definitely a, a good solution for preventing people from hiding and, you know, to, to keep the, everything within, which is fine by me.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
And we do have one speaker in opposition. Would Mr. Stephen Troutman please come to the podium? If you could please state your name for the record as well.
My name is Steve Troutman. I'm the opposing party and I appreciate you listening to my concerns. I've got a little bit of a list here, so I'll try to run through it as fast as possible. First of all, to address what this gentleman just said, I'm the neighbor next door that no one's talked to about this problem. No one's approached me saying, what do you think about this idea of a parking lot or anything? So nobody's working with me about this. So that's why I'm here to try to get you to work with me if possible. And I wanna, before I start my concerns, I'd like to say two things. First of all, two of the best things that's happened in Virginia Beach, at least to the residents, is the residential parking passes. It has stopped all of the problems filtering through the neighborhoods. The second is the parking lots on the west side of Pacific Avenue because that's, they're trying to keep that as a buffer so that that doesn't happen. And I just don't understand, if, if it's form-based code, you can't have a parking lot, why are we even here talking about if you're not allowed to have one? But I guess you can get exceptions to any rule. Now, if I'm wrong, maybe somebody in the city can correct me on that if, if, if that's not the code, that no parking lots are allowed.
Well, that's correct.
Okay. To address the parking lot being there, first of all, it's putting this parking lot right in the middle of the block. I'm sure everybody's here has heard of the block. You got all the bars there. They're gonna park there. The people that are parking there are using their vehicles as personal condos. They park in there and they have all of their paraphernalia, whatever, you know, tailgate partying. You're gonna have an eighteen-year-old kid out there that's afraid to go approach these people or even try to talk to them. Do you even call the police? It takes an hour or two to even get an officer there because they're over understaffed and too much going on in the summertime. So that's one of the problems. It's a very rough crowd that's gonna be there. If this was gonna be open till six o'clock in the evening, at latest nine, I probably wouldn't oppose because that's the family crowd that I wanna see coming. I want families to be able to come to Virginia Beach, enjoy our beach, enjoy our restaurants and spend money here. But after that time, the crowd coming in is the block crowd. And that's a very rough crowd. And I've got customers that's gonna be right beside that. Excuse me, my glasses back on here. Besides that, they use my bathroom as a urinal continuously, ever since that lot's been there. No one's cared for that lot since it's been there. Right now, if you look, I think one of y'all saw, and I've got a picture on my cell phone, but under my tree on their property, we have a guy with a tent. I guess that's his personal condo, sleeping in there. I can't do anything about it because I don't own the property. The police won't allow me to make a complaint. But no one, no one's managing this property. They don't cut the grass. All the trash from that parking lot blows on my lot. So they're gonna be using the property again and I don't have any, I don't think anybody's gonna be paying attention. They're just looking for the money possibly.
You are just about out of time.
I'm out of time?
Yeah. I'm sorry, you have three minutes allotted.
Oh, I thought I had ten minutes.
No, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you for listening to me.
That was my fault. Is that your fault?
That was my fault.
Did you tell me you had ten?
I did.
Go ahead and, and, yeah, please go ahead and finish.
You know, I rent to a lot of families. I'm very family orientated there. I'm an old beach owner from, my family's been owning motels since nineteen sixty-six. This property also backs up to Angie's. I'm not sure if y'all remember, Angie's Bed and Breakfast, Barbie Yates used to own it.
Sure.
Well, her backyard facility that I own and all along with Angie's backs up to that parking lot. That's where the tree is there. And I have people back there, picnic tables, cookout facilities, ping pong table. All of them go back there to sit back, read books and, and try to have some quiet. I don't start to speed up here, I'm sorry. You know, you're talking about the buffers under, the gentleman just talked about, that he didn't wanna use it for an alleyway. Well, I like the ten to fifteen foot off my building. That would be night, if it's allowed. A fence could be, could lock off that buffer zone so no one could get into that zone as used as an alley. They could have a gate opening to going from their parking lot to go in there and cut the grass or take care of the shrubbery, you know, but what are they gonna do there? There's, I think I heard in the earlier meeting that you're allowed to use a coin-operated attendant without someone being there. That would really be a detriment to my business.
Okay.
Even, I mean, if you could put a security guard there after, if it's gonna be allowed after nine o'clock, that's fine, maybe. You know, all these people are gonna be filtering back and forth through the neighborhoods. A bathroom, the Yuri Spivey is probably the worst thing you could put there because they don't take care of them. If you could have a bathroom, an actual bathroom that their guests could use, I would, I'd appreciate that. Instead of going around the neighborhood or peeing around my buildings or whatever they do. The wrought iron fence, I like if that was gonna be, I think that's nice. You can see through it. It doesn't, I don't know if I really want the eight-foot fence. I think it'd look too much like a prison compound. A nice six-foot fence would look nice. There was some shrubbery and stuff like that so you could see through it. And that would add to it possibly. Maybe cameras out there, people, lighting and cameras are two deterrents, I think. And if people know they're being filmed, they're less likely to, to have mischief going on there. And I think that's pretty much it because I'm gonna try to cut back everything. But I really appreciate you listening to me. I've been there since nineteen eighty-three and I ran a very successful small business there. I have acquired all the property around me. And someone was saying that there's a cul-de-sac. That cul-de-sac doesn't slow anybody from driving through. You might as well just put a stoplight there. Maybe they might watch, listen to a stoplight with the little plastic cones that they have there. They drive with this all the time. So that's not gonna stop people from going through the, you know, the residential areas back through there. But thank you.
Thank you. Um, hold on, we have a couple of questions for you.
Question for you. What, what's, what's taking place now? I mean, how, I mean, if it's, if you, if you're worried about this much, if it's under supervision and it's not under supervision, what's happening now?
Just a blank parking lot. No one's there. There's a, no one parks it that I see.
Nobody uses it?
They have it, they have, they have one entrance on Twenty-third Street and they have a chain across it. So no one uses it for parking.
So you don't have any problem with people parking there all during the year?
No.
Rest of the time?
No, no one's parking there. They're not allowed to park there to begin with. But yeah, I mean, if they were, I'd be calling the police department and having them addressing it.
The time that somebody did allow parking there, did you, did you notify the police?
The person, I, I can get through the history if you want. But in the very beginning, there was a paintball place on the east side of Pacific Avenue, very nice gentleman. And he ran a nice business there. And he bought the property across the street. He used that for parking for his guests, for they're, they're coming to his business. I don't ever know where it's ever been a paid parking lot. I do remember what the gentleman said about somebody was staying there, parking illegally. There was one time, one of the chaplains, I think Billy Chaplin, whatever, he was there, I walked over and talked to him because my brother was married into the family. And I was asking, he said, well, we're looking at maybe buying the property, and I guess from Mr. Decker. And he said, well, you know, we're putting up a parking lot and we're renting it from him or whatever. And that's what I was told. But he was finally shut down because I guess he didn't have a permit through the city or whatever. He was only there for a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Redmond?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm on, what do you own there? I'm unsure exactly what your business interests are. Can you kinda tell me what, where your stuff is and what you have?
Welcome to pointing to you or you?
There's a pointer.
There's a pointer on the, on the...
Right there.
Thank you.
Hi, let me see. I own this building, this building. This used to be Angie's right here. And I have four, four-bedroom houses here.
Okay.
Excuse me, three-bedroom houses.
Okay.
And I rent them all out to summer guests.
Okay, great. Thank you.
My, my area that I was talking about right here is this tree area. That's where the picnic area and all that that all my guests use. I don't have a pool, so I have very limited entertainment for my guests. But that yard gets used a lot for picnics and stuff like that.
Okay.
Also, we've had weddings and the other small things there.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Redmond?
We're, we're only missing one parcel in that thing. What about the parcel that backs up to the parking?
Right here?
No? Down below that, right, right there?
That's owned, I think it's just got sold. That was owned by the guy that owned the Raves Motel. And he also owns this property here, which is the apartment building.
How is that used?
They didn't, it isn't being used.
Okay.
Same thing, the same thing with this lot here. I was hoping they could all get in conjecture, I mean, together and build something nice there that'd increase property values. I don't think parking lots increase people's property values. But to me, they're pretty much of an eyesore. Now, the city lots, if you wanna put a city lot, that I'd have no problem. City lots are very well maintained and they look nice. And, you know, you don't hear any noise from them.
Any other questions? Mr. Troutman? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll have you there.
Thank you. Yes, so would you like to come up and, for rebuttal, please?
Couple of things. Number one is, you know, the gentleman mentioned the trash and trash blown to his property and so forth, simply because nobody using the property and people, you can't control people from crossing there and throw their trash. If this is developed with parking lot and with an attendant who is there, then, you know, there won't be any trash blown anywhere. Because we providing trash receptacles for the people who park there. Second is, I understand what, what the gentleman said about the noise and the, the, later at night and what have you. I talked to my client and he said, look, if, if this, if, if the issue become a problem at night, we willing to shut down at nine o'clock. It's not a problem. But they're gonna have an attendant there. So it is, we're not trying to impose anything. We're trying to work with the neighbors. We're trying to be a good neighbors. We're trying to make something awful to something decent. And this is what we're trying to do. So with that, I mean, I'd be happy to answer any question if you may have.
You have any questions? Anybody? Okay. Thank you very much. All right, we will, we don't have any more speakers, right? Okay. So we will close this hearing now and open it for discussions amongst the commissioners.
Look at me.
Yeah, don't you?
Yeah. Jeff, this is yours?
Start. Mike and I were just in here looking at, at some of the close-ups of the pictures. And where we were talking about putting a fence along the north end of the property, there's a thirty-foot high fence there right now, basically in the form of a center block wall. I don't, I, I'm trying to figure out what a fence will even do along that portion of the property. I mean, to me, it would almost look better if it was just a landscape buffer along that, that wall. Definitely would need a fence around the Pacific Avenue side to keep people from hopping over. I think this is probably one of those lots where you do need an attendant and not be a self-parking type of facility. I think you'll have a lot less issues with a, an attendant there. I, I think the one gentleman in opposition said that it could take an hour to get police there. And there's quite a bit of police traffic down at the oceanfront in that area after ten, eleven o'clock. I mean, it's, they seem to be on just about every block down there. So I'm okay with the parking lot going there, uh, 'cause it's been a lot, parking lot basically as long as I can remember. I'm just wrestling with what to do on the north end of that piece of property where it abuts to the center block wall of his hotel. And I'm open for ideas from Mr. Redman.
Commissioner Redman?
I don't have any for you, um, very frankly, because I'm, I'm not, um, I, I, I'm not comfortable with the application, given this gentleman's opposition, which I find compelling. And I might feel differently about it if it were on the other side of Pacific Avenue, but it's not. And, um, so I just, I can't, I just cannot get, I can't get comfortable with that idea unless, you know, there, there were no opposition, I suppose, or at least the opposition weren't quite as compelling as I found it to be. So I don't know how you assuage his concerns, and I think they're legitimate concerns. Again, it might be, uh, my, my, my view might be different if we were on the other side of Pacific Avenue, but I'm, I'm, I will be hard to persuade.
You have a city block, two, two streets down and basically the exact same location. I think it's on Twenty-Fifth Street. I think there's a city lot that's on the west side of Pacific that's right up against, um, I believe residential also.
I, I think he was quite comfortable with the idea of a city lot, but it's, that's not what we're talking about. And so you're gonna have probably a different level of monitoring and a different level of responsibility and response times and all that stuff. So anyway, you, you can feel free to think differently, but that's, I kind of think that way, so.
Okay. Jan?
Um, yeah, I, I sort of feel a little bit like Dave does, but the, the gentleman in opposition did indicate that he would be in favor with it if the hours were closed, if it was, the parking lot was used more for families going down the beach. I think his biggest objection, if I'm not mistaken, has really more to do with the late night, um, group of people that come. And, and so maybe the applicant didn't, you know, he indicated he wouldn't be opposed to having time constraints put on it. So, you know, maybe that would be an answer that could, you know, get the applicant, the, the use of the property and also, you know, help the neighbors, uh, if it were, you know, used during the parking lot during, you know, the day and early evening hours for beach residents and then, you know, closed off, uh, you know, eight and nine o'clock at night.
Ron?
Uh, you know, it, the sounds, the sounds of the resort area are the sounds of the resort area. Uh, we're right in the resort area, so I don't know how to, uh, to tamp that down any, without police and if it really gets loud and things like that. But people walking around, they're talking, there's cars. It's, it's an urban setting. Um, and I think this is an interim use. It's a five-year condition in here for use. And I think we would, I think it's important to let people utilize their property as long as they comply. And if they don't comply, then they, they have to deal with the city on non-compliance. And so, uh, I think, you know, Jeff brought up this morning about the, the people jaywalking, if you will. And I think it can be, I think the city can, can monitor, can control that by the fencing and making you exit out on the corners where you actually have a crosswalk and get across the street. And that would pull people away, for the most part, away from the hotel. And I'm with Jeff. I don't know what you're trying to, to get the, a center block wall that's four stories or three stories high, two stories, I don't know how high it is right offhand, but, um, I don't know what, how, what, what else you do with that. I mean, I think you put a fence or landscaping, that's fine. I, I'm in favor of the application as, um, as proposed.
Don?
I, I tend to agree with the, you know, I, I think the property is better off being under management and having somebody taking care of it than it is sitting there vacant. Uh, and with these, uh, with these conditions, the, uh, the hotel is a pretty good-sized wall there. It's a, the only, the only problem I would have would be if people would cut between the corner of the fence out front and the hotel to cut, cut through that way. That would be the, the only concern I would have for, for not putting a fence up on that north end. But, but I think it's, I think the application is, uh, is, is worthy of a, of, of a positive vote. But, uh, like I say, with that, with that question about the fence on that north end to, to cut, to keep people from cutting through by the hotel to get into the lot, where we'd prefer them to come around to an entrance to go in and out of the lot. And I think it's better off if you, uh, if you're having somebody attend the lot than you are if it's just there for, for anybody to stop and park, even though there are no parking signs.
I've got one, one question for Ashby. Where the tree is, where, where the hotel ends and his picnic area starts, is that butt up against that parking lot? Does the parking lot, that's part of it? So the only thing in between that open area of his and the parking lot is that tree?
I think there's a white fence in there.
There a fence?
Yeah, there might be a low.
There's landscaping there.
But there's not.
There's landscaping in here on the site plan. That's all I wanted to talk about real quick.
Well, and that was another thing.
Oh, I see it. Okay. So there's a chain link with the plastic pieces throughout.
There you go. Look. You have trees there.
So. I don't know what is, what type of fence is on the property line right there, but this fencing associated with the parking lot would be inset, sorry, inset from the, towards the interior of the parking lot with the landscaping on the outside.
And I know when we spoke yesterday, because, because we know that area has a tendency to have a, um, a robust nightlife, um, we spoke about possibly with their landscaping, putting like pachysandra in there, something to deter, um, people from getting into that area with a thorny type of bush kind of thing, which might be something that they would consider, um, which would help keep people off of that area.
Yes. During the detailed plan review, I wanted to review it with the police and the crime prevention through environmental design standards, um, for plant material and the type of fence, the height of the fence, being able to see through the fence. And that fence, um, that's mentioned, yes, they do have the solid wall, but with the landscape buffer, the intent of the additional fence there is to protect the landscaping from people cutting through and, and walking on there. So somehow it needs to be secured.
Right. Okay. Commissioner Weiner?
That, that site plan's different than what we have. On our site plan, our, the parking bumpers are right up against the building. And that one has a little bit of the shrubbery landscaping between the parking bumpers and the building. I like that. That's the one we're talking about right there, right?
Well, that was, there's only been one submitted site plan and it's not a condition because it doesn't have everything that the conditions, the recommended conditions include. So that's just kind of a, a conceptual idea, but there's, there are additional things that need to be added.
Okay, okay. That's not what we have, though. That's, ours is the parking bumpers are right up against the building. It doesn't show any landscaping on the bottom, on the north side?
On the north side. I'm not even sure which way is the north on here.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong side there. The parking bumpers are up against the building on that, on the north side. Is there any way we could do some type of landscaping to keep the cars a little farther away from the building? You know what I mean?
Well, that's included in the recommended conditions.
Ten foot.
So again, kind of don't mind the
Ten-foot buffer.
Submitted site plan, but.
Okay. This is what, it doesn't show it, though.
Yeah, 'cause this, this was the conceptual site plan.
Okay, I see.
Submitted with the application.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I mean, I kind of like it just 'cause of the fact it's gonna fix the corner up. It's gonna look better and it does now. Um, and, um, like Mr. Hor, Mr. Ripley was saying, it's, the, the noise of the beach is the noise of the beach. And I don't know how you're gonna get away from that, but I'm, I'm gonna say I'm in favor for it also.
Okay. Commissioner Quonset? So I think there's been some very interesting perspective provided by having an adjacent property owner come forward. And I think that, you know, David said that that adds to the information we have to make a better decision. And then Jan provided that there's compromise offered in relation to timeframe that might provide this adjacent landowner some comfort. And so although Ron is right, this is a normally heavily populated area, so there's gonna be noise, but there's opportunity to kind of meet in the middle for these people. And I think we might try to do that. If, you know, the commercial, the, the one who wants to make a commercial parking, as Don said, which will be better managed, probably provide a little, a level of safety there that isn't there now, we might be able to do something good by providing a timeframe that's reasonable to the adjacent landowner, but also reasonable to the one who, who wants to change it to a lot. Yes, that's what I think.
Okay. Well, you know, we're starting from the premise that this kind of use is not, is frowned upon in terms of our zoning code. I mean, and, and we're here because it requires a special exception to have it. So it would make you think maybe, you know, conditions are, some, something needs to be considered. Why? Why would it be frowned upon? For noise, for aesthetics, for, and then now we say, well, noise isn't a big deal 'cause it's, it's just the way it goes. Now, it's down at the oceanfront. But I think, I think, uh, as Ashley points out, and Ashby points out in her write-up, it says, um, you know, this sites proximity to the popular bars and nightclubs on the block leaves it susceptible to crowded, rowdy behavior, especially during evening and nighttime hours. So I, I'm sort of okay with going with the, with the proposal if there's staffing on, on this property that would have, be able to monitor some of the, um, you know, after a certain time, there's gotta be somebody there and as, as long as they want to be open. I don't, there's no hours on it, so they can be open twenty-four, seven, right?
No, there's two thirty to six.
Okay.
Two to six AM.
It's closed two to six AM?
I think. Jeff?
I poorly wrote an extra condition that I would like to see that says, you know, parking lot to be operated by an onsite attendant at all times during operation. Um, just to help control that.
Yeah.
I, I'm worried. I understand the time constraints. I mean, I go, I mean, one of my favorite restaurants is right there on Twenty-third Street.
Restaurants?
It is. I'll talk. And, you know, if you go there and you're having a dinner and you end up parking, parking's tough there. I mean, they have some spots in the back, but that, that gets full pretty quick. And if I'm eating dinner and it runs past nine o'clock, I'm just concerned that people are gonna be running to their car like me.
I'll walk you in, huh?
Yeah. I, I, so I, I mean, it's, this is the oceanfront. It's, it's a totally different animal down there. Um, so I mean, I, I would support the application as is with a condition that requires an attendant to be onsite during operation.
Yes, that's the, that's the, it's not much.
Um, would the applicant be amenable towards that?
Yeah, absolutely. Like, we mentioned, the, uh, the parking lot will be manned at all time, will be run by, uh, people. I mean, there would be an attendant at all time. The, the parking lot is open. So it's not, there is no problem with that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We definitely, I mean, it will be manned. Somebody will be there at all time. It's open.
Ashby?
And, and when they finish, they close the gate. I mean, when everybody leaves, they close the gate for the night and they go home.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask you one more question?
Sure.
Are y'all gonna manage the parking lot? Are you, are you contracting it out to somebody else to manage it?
I'm, I'm the agent for the applicant, but the, uh, the applicant will be, will have Wayne Gibson manage the parking lot, who have managed several parking lot in the, at the beach.
Okay. So, so your applicant has got to make sure that Mr. Gibson adheres to these conditions?
Yes, sir. No problem. Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, that's my only question.
Yeah, there, there is no problem with that. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. Mr. Hudson?
I'd make a motion to approve the application with an added condition that states, again, I'd rather it be written a little bit better than this, but parking lot to be operated by an onsite attendant at all times during operation. And, um,
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion made by Commissioner Hudson, seconded by Commissioner Edman. All right. Vote is open. Call for questions.
By a vote of eight to one, item number two, Twenty-third Fund Parking has been approved with the added condition.
Great.
Um, our next item is going to be agenda item number five, Willis Family Partnership. This is an application for a change of nonconformity on property located at three eighteen and three twenty, Thirty-Fourth Street and Beach District.
Hello?
Good afternoon, Ms. Oliver, members of the commission. Eddie Bradan, his beach attorney representing the applicant. First thing I want to do is I want to thank Jonathan and Carolyn Smith and, and Director Frankenfield for their work with us on this redevelopment proposal. You all are familiar with the Seapines area, which was left out of the Form Base Code due to concerns from the Navy. So we can't rezone a number of these properties that have, um, non-conforming uses that have been there for decades and decades. And that's the case here with, um, ten units and four structures on the property that is legally non-conforming. So it's an application to modify, um, that non-conforming use. The, and the staff's done a wonderful job with the, uh, with the write-up and you all reviewed that this morning. I want to hit on some, some points I think that weren't hit on that are, that I think are very important. This is, um, this redevelopment, this property has three hundred and forty linear feet of street frontage on Thirty-Fourth Street, Arctic Avenue and the alley Thirty-third and a half street. Today, there, because of the, the street's narrowness and, and not being, um, completely developed to today's standards, there's room to park one, possibly two cars. Everything else is no parking. Today, these ten units have twelve parking spaces, eight of which are legally onsite and four of which are not. So with the three hundred and forty linear feet of road frontage and ten units, uh, you have a total of twelve semi, or onsite, semi-onsite parking spaces and one to two, um, legal offsite. Um, and I'd say really it's one. The, with these, with this redevelopment, the owner of the property will be spending well over a hundred thousand dollars, more like a hundred and a quarter, to, to widen the streets, putting curb and gutter on all three streets. Um, there will be a total of seven at least on street parking spaces when we're done. Uh, and there will be onsite seventeen spaces instead of twelve. That represents an increase of twelve spaces, one shy of doubling the number of spaces that exist today. At the same time, we're reducing the number of units from ten to nine, and we are not increasing one iota the number of bedrooms. So we're not increasing density at all. So you got a huge benefit from a parking standpoint for what's there's now, what is there now. And the, and the redevelopment, the right-of-way is being done, um, totally with the applicant's money, not with any taxpayer dollars. It's organic redevelopment. The property, when we're done, will be worth probably three or more than three times what it's worth today. And the tenants, the caliber of tenants will be, uh, much better because the rents will be probably commensurate with that increase in value. Today, the property is almost entirely impervious surface. With this redevelopment, we'll be reducing the amount of impervious surface even by adding the parking. We're still in, reducing the impervious surface. What is there now was developed before. We had a stormwater, uh, management ordinance and there's no stormwater treatment taking place. And we will be treating the stormwater in accordance with today's requirements. The, um, uh, the gentlemen who are here, I apologize. I thought that my representatives had talked to everybody, but apparently that wasn't the case. But I've spoken to the gentlemen that are here and they'll be presenting. But they had sent a letter which I wanted to address, which I've taken time before this started to address some of the questions or concerns they had. The trash, um, will be, it's not a public pickup, um, because it's an apartment. The, the trash containers will be shared, um, and it'll be private pickup. But they will be in the storage building. They're not exterior, not gonna be stored ex, exterior. They will be rolled out onto the alley, um, when they're picked up, but it won't be the same time that the, that their trash is picked up on the alley. The, um, what else was, was the, they had concerns also about lighting and we're not gonna be putting any, um, you know, uh, high lights or anything like that out there in the, in the parking lot. It'll be as minimal as we can make it. Uh, we're not gonna be adding to any light pollution whatsoever. So, um, and that's really, they, I think I've addressed the other concerns, which were parking and stormwater runoff, which we can't, um, we're not gonna runoff onto their property. Now, the other thing, the parking lot, they, there's a seven, you can't see it up here, but, um, and actually, I apologize. I've, I've got larger landscape plans that I was gonna, uh, hand out, but neglected to do so. And I don't even know what I've done with them. I guess I left them in my seat. But the, the parking lot is, there we go. Um, the edge, it's cur, it's a curb parking lot and there's seven and a half feet between the curb and the property line. There will be, um, a row of evergreen shrubs and some large canopy trees that'll be planted, um, with that. And so the concern of cars backing out and hitting the fence is not, they'd have to jump the curb and go through the landscaping to hit, hit the fence, which was one of the other concerns that was expressed by, that were expressed by the folks to the, to the east. So, um, and the, but the parking spaces are on this side. There is no parking along here. So, um, that's that. Now, these, these are stacked spaces. They will be rented as a part of, um, the units. There are nine They will be rented as a part of the units. There are nine two-bedroom units and three one-bedroom units. And those who need two parking spaces, they will be, you know, reserved for that particular unit that rents those, so that there'll be coordination and people, you know, backing out and, and leaving. It won't be just random parking on the stacked spaces. So, those were some of the questions that they had put in the letter, which I addressed to them previously. Be happy to answer any questions. I think it's a fantastic organic redevelopment and no taxpayer money whatsoever. The taxpayers will start making money the day it's completed, from today, from what they're making today.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon? I have one. So, we talked about the material, the exterior material and upgrading it, since we have those guidelines in that area for hardy plank.
And I did speak with my client based on, on the concern you raised this morning, and we will agree, in fact, think it's a better idea because of the proximity to the, to the ocean, that it be a cement fiber board.
Great.
So, where it's, where it's currently described as being some vinyl, it'll be cement fiber board.
Perfect. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Thanks for your minutes.
Thank you.
We do also have one speaker in opposition for a group, for 34th Street condo associates. Would Mr. Irvin B. Oliver Jr. come to the podium, please? Could you please state your name for the record as well?
Yes, I'm Irvin B. Oliver Jr., Buddy. I don't think I'm any relation to Dee.
Hi, Buddy.
Hi. I believe, I'm speaking for our condo association, so I think I get 10 minutes in this regard. I don't think I was told that. I live at 316 34th Street, Unit A. My neighbors are here. James Westcott, he lives at Unit B. And Bill Cowsh lives at Unit C. We are townhouse-style condominiums. Our property runs from 34th back to 33rd and a half Street. We've been there three years. Our property is, the whole east side of the development, our property adjoins. The houses that are there now, the rentals, were originally single-family homes that were changed into rentals through the years, but have the appearance of single-family homes. And so, now we'll have two institutional-looking buildings. So, you can see that's quite a change, which of course would concern us. You know, how are these going to look? How they're going to be built? The traffic. So, we have concerns. We, by the way, were listed in the Planning Commission Seapine Station Design Guideline Program. We were, our photo of our buildings were listed as a good example of what the Planning Commission wanted in the Seapines area, by the way. When we purchased our homes, it was under the impression that the adjoining property would eventually be like-kind rather than institutional-type apartment buildings. Though we would rather, we would prefer similar or single-family type homes, we welcome redevelopment that includes new sidewalks that go all the way down and curbing and guttering, of course, that goes all the way down. But again, obviously, we're concerned about, you know, institutional types of buildings, particularly since we are being told that on the other side of our street, that whole side may be sold, and there's a possibility a four-story is allowed on that side, that there could be another, there could be a huge institutional-type building. That maybe would not, that maybe they would be allowed to have fewer parking spaces. And, you know, so again, the concern with more cars on our street. And that's my first, my first item is, is the parking. If you're familiar with 34th Street, it does not require, it does not have metered parking, except just a few were at Pacific. Most of the street does not have meters, and there's no deed count required. So, those spaces are at a premium, in, particularly in the warm months. Everybody that, are many folks that work in the hotels along there, tourists going to the beach, are all looking for parking on 34th and overflow onto Arctic. So, premium, parking is very much at a premium. We are told that the project will have, is reducing from 10 apartments to nine apartments, and they will have 17 parking spaces as compared to the required 18, two per unit, and we're told eight of which are stacked. My experience has been that folks don't like to put their car behind the other. It's very inconvenient, and particularly if they're having to pay. Wouldn't that be an incentive just to try to find a parking spot around the, the unit? So, you know, why, if it's seven, if seven is the number that the, is, they have the right to do, which would be 14 parking spaces, why not go with the seven and have 14 non-stacked onsite parking spots, you know, rather than saying, "Well, you know, those extra spaces can be around, we'll be, we're creating these extra spaces around the units." But, but those are at a premium. They will have a hard time finding, particularly if they leave to go to work, people swarm right into those spaces, and they'll have a hard time. And this is, this is at all hours, not just during the normal working hours. Trash receptacles, that has been, and by the way, we have not, we were not approached before this by anyone until Mr. Burdon approached us before the meeting. So, so he has answered some of these. We are glad to hear that we have all kinds of visions of how the trash was going to be handled. So, that's nice to know that they will be under that car, that auto port kind of thing. Stormwater, if, from the photo, and if you can use the one of the elevation that shows the existing structures, that, the land, if you can see it, yep, right there, is very high on that first side, and then slopes way down on the other. So, we have real concerns on how that stormwater is going to be handled. On 33rd and a half Street, on the back, the water, we already have, are having trouble with water puddling at the end of our garage. When there's a storm, it backs up there. And so, if that's not handled just right, we could have really many more issues with, with water, with stormwater runoff. I think he has addressed the light pollution issue that I had had in the letter as well, concerned about the bright lights, you know, in an institutional apartment building right next door. The, as far as the fence, I'm the unit that's right there at that fence, that I had visions of cars backing up out of their, in cramped spaces, out of their parking lots, you know, hitting their, and their, and their guests, not just them, you know, hitting the, you know, hitting that accelerator instead of the brake and going right into my, to my fence. But I'm told that it's going to be the curbing, and I hope that's the case, curbing, and, and not just the low evergreens, but higher arbor viady types of, of things that maybe will help with the sound of slamming doors and, and that type of thing, and, and block that from being hit, the fence from being hit. The final issue, and I did not have this on the letter, I did not notice this until just recently, but in the plans, and if we can go back to the, the plan that shows the front elevation and the two buildings on the front, there's one more that shows it even, yes, right there. The, the bottom one on the, the left, that's one building, the one on the right is the second building. There, there is those porches, decks, right there. In our earlier elevation, they were on the right of that first building, and they were moved to the left. If, if the setback is going to be as short as it is, and I thought for apartments, it was supposed to be 30 feet, and I'm understanding this is like 10 or 12, but that will be, that is right next, I could reach out and, will almost be able to reach out and touch them. And people like to party and on their decks and whatever, and all three levels, my bedroom is right there. And so, we have concerns, why couldn't that be relocated back to the right of that first building as they had in one of the earlier elevations? That's of a particular concern to us. These are our full-time homes. This is my retirement home. A good bit of my worth, net worth, is involved in the price of that home. So, it's very important to us. We're not here, and, and excuse me, I don't understand a lot about nonconformity and all that kind of thing. But I do know that this is very important to all three of us that, that, and I'm not here with legal representation, but it's very important to us that, that y'all look out for our interests, you know, as well as the developers' interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Buddy. Did anybody have any questions? Mr. Oliver, sorry.
I'll be brief. The, the issue, first of all, I had the privilege of representing Eric Holmes when they redeveloped the property that these gentlemen owned through the same process, but they obviously didn't have 10 nonconforming, legally nonconforming uses, and not all of the structures were built as single-family either, but that's really in the weeds and doesn't really make any difference because they're all legally nonconforming. I will point out, however, that with regard to the last item, which was not in, in the, Mr. Oliver's letter, the, these little balcony areas, first of all, they're, they're not large at all. Secondly, they are not, they're actually in front of, because of the guidelines and where we want to build in this area, which, when Eric Zimmerman redeveloped the property that they have the three condos on, these guidelines didn't exist at that point in time. The building that Mr. Oliver is, I guess, the western unit owner on, is actually set back further. This deck will be, and again, it's, it is not large at all. It's really to provide a view of the, down the street to the ocean. It, it will not be around his windows, because it's actually in front. Their property setback is five feet from the property line. We are 10 feet back from the property line, and that's where the, the balcony is required to be as well, 10 feet back. So, it's a double the setback that they have from their property, and it's out in, actually in front of where their building was built, because it was built before the, the guidelines came to exist. I would also point out that across the street, which I know nothing about, in terms of the number of units that are there, there's A24 and A36 zoning, and again, these, their property's zoned A12, and that's what it, that's what it has been. I mean, none of the zonings here can change, other than by downzoning through the, the process. But all of the, the items that were listed in the, the letter that was provided, which I received, I think we more than, more than adequately addressed, but we have also agreed to meet with these three gentlemen and have further discussions and moving forward. But the stormwater situation, you all well know, we can't put any water on their property, and we will clearly, I daggle ensure there's water going in their property from this property today and has been for decades, because there's no stormwater treatment that's taking place. So, we will improve that situation without any shadow of a doubt. If you have to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon? No. Okay, thank you.
And we, we'll do the hardy, the cement fiber.
Great, thank you. All right, so we'll close the hearing now and open it up for discussion. Anyone want to start? I do know that, I'll say something. I do know that when they start to grade this piece of property with the spotlight on stormwater, now the way it is, it'll probably improve where it's pooling in the back versus letting it, it's probably due to the fact that that piece of property doesn't have that addressed on it and with it on the height. As they go to grade it out and stuff, it probably will improve where that water runs away from your property more so than where it is now. But, Jeff?
Looking at me again?
Yeah, well, this is all your district.
You know, I was sitting here and I was trying to, and I was listening to the opposition, and I appreciate you for coming down. I think you did a very good job of, of laying out your concerns. At the, so I was taking notes, and I was trying to determine, you know, what reason would I have to not want to see this go through? And I, I was struggling. I mean, I think, you know, you got your street improvements, which are going to be nice. You're going to have an increase in on-street parking, and even if you, I think you have a good point about people not liking to stack cars. So, even if those four cars decided not to stack and park on-street, I think that still leaves you with about two or three more spaces on the street than you have currently. You're getting a reduction in the density of the property. I'm pretty confident that this will increase all property values in, in proximity to this, this parcel. A reduction in the impervious surface of the, the property, the improvement in building materials that, that the applicant has agreed to. I'm trying to find a negative. And then, you know, your last concern about the balconies being on your side of the property, I was, you know, trying to think, could, could that be an issue? But I think Mr. Burdon laid out that they're actually in front, more towards the street than the adjoining property. And I don't, I'm taking your word that they're, they're not party balconies. They're just a small little balcony with maybe a chair or two that you could sit down and have coffee or, and, you know, maybe look like, look down the street and hopefully see the ocean, if there is an ocean view from those. I'm not sure. I, yeah, I don't either. But I, I'm, I'm really struggling for a negative on this. And I can't find one. So, I, I believe I'm going to support this application as it stands.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a nice improvement, and, and I, I agree with you, Buddy. It's, change is always difficult. Nobody likes it by any means, I think. I'm not sure, the balconies, I, I don't know. We always had one, we never used one, other than to check the weather and, and the winter. That's, that's on a northeast corner, so nobody's going to be out there, that's for sure. And I'm with Jeff on the parking. It's just sort of the, unfortunately, just sort of the nature of the beast down there. And, and hopefully, they'll learn real quick, just because they can't find a spot on the street when it gets to be July, that they'll stack those cars real fast. They'll, and there won't be some, you know, impeding on the, on the, on the street very much. But it does, it is nice to know that, that there is more additional on-street parking, and, and there'll be a sidewalk and things like that. And so, I think that'll be, it'll be nice to have. But I have to, I have to, I have to support it. Yes, Commissioner Edman?
Move approval of the application.
I'll second.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Edman, would you like to add a condition in regard to the cement?
Oh. Thank you for the reminder. The, the, I would like to move approval of the application. However, I would like to, do I need to add a condition or replace cement fiber board for the siding in the application? Whichever you say. You're the boss.
I still second it.
Thank you.
Okay, great, votes open? Thank you.
By a vote of nine to zero, item number five, Willis Family Partnership, has been approved with the added condition. Our next order of business is agenda item number seven, Jones at 1888 LLC. This is an application for a conditional use permit for bulk storage yard on property located at 1888 Virginia Beach Boulevard, an undeveloped parcel on the northeast corner of Virginia Beach Boulevard and Maxi Drive in the Beach District.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, the Planning Commission. For the record, again, Billy Garington on behalf of the applicant, Jones at 1888 LLC. I appreciate you putting this one on consent, and I promise you, I didn't pull this one off. There's a speaker on this. I just want to, first off, I want to thank Jimmy McNamara and Carolyn Smith for their help on this. They have given us an unusual amount of their time. We have gone back and forth on this application, trying to come up with something that's good for the neighborhood as a whole, especially when it comes to the buffering and the landscaping on this project. We think we have that. We think we have a very attractive building that's going to go on this piece of property. We are in total agreement with every one of the conditions that the staff has put on this. And again, we thank you for trying to put it on consent, and we'll defer to the, to the opposition if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Garington.
Would Mr. Garfield Summers please come to the podium? And if you could state your name for the record as well.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Garfield Summers. I'm an owner of the Maximant Association.
Excuse me, sir, could you pull the mic up a little bit? I'm having trouble hearing.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. My name is Garfield Summers. I'm an owner of the Association, Maximant Association. And as I took observation of this property, I have a problem with this property, because on one side of the property, there has, you have auto, auto people on the other side, and you have, on the other side, you have, also you have impound on this side adjacent to the, the property. And the street is too small. And the street is too small. Only one at a time get up the street, up the street right here. Okay, you have, come down the street, right here, you got a lot of auto section right here on this street. And it's always blocking the street when they pull out. Then you have an asphalt company in this building right here as they pull out, always blocking this company, this street right here. So when the school bus come in the morning and evening, sometimes they have to wait until they get out of the way to pick up the kids. And you got a lot of kids come to school. I live in this association right here, Maxima right here, association right here. We come out and only one car at a time can come down the street because it's so small and narrow. So therefore, if they put this bulk situation right here, it's going to be more problems for us to get out the street.
Got a question?
No, I would just like to say, I've used the mechanic on Maxey Drive before and he is correct, that's a very narrow lane going down through there. And I don't think there was any, there's no widening of that road happening with this application.
They, so, to the entrance?
I have a question.
Yes.
There's no entrance or exit of this bulk storage onto Maxey Lane, so I'm not sure.
No, there is.
Oh, that is where the entrance is. Yeah, and it's right about where that.
Where the N is, I think.
Where the M is?
Okay, I thought it was on the Boulevard, my apologies.
It's all adjusted right here, it's adjusted.
So the problem you're having, it's not with that piece of property and I don't know that that, the new development will really cause a problem because they'll be contained within that property as much as you're having the difficulty with the property across the street, correct?
There'll be people going in and out.
Well, the property across the street, okay, if the bulk, you know, this situation right here, put the vehicles or whatever in the situation right here, it's going to be more problems here because it's going to block everything right here in the street. It can block everything out.
Right, but my question to you, Mr. Summers, is currently, right now, it's that automobile business across, that's existing at this moment?
Yes, you got the automobile, you got the asphalt people, then you got impound company right here.
That they're the ones right now that are causing, obviously, because there's nothing there yet.
The street is too small, it's narrow.
Right.
So if you put this, this book, this situation right here, this, this storage space right here, it'd be more problems because they're going to come out, you know, their vehicles be more problems. Because the school bus guy keep on complaining, he come down to pick the kids up, sometimes they come out, he gotta wait until they pick the kids up because you make him late.
Right.
In the morning and evening.
Understood.
So my concern is that, is the possibility that we can oppose this and put a playground or put the kids in the neighborhood?
Mr. Weiner?
When the school bus comes down Maxey Drive, does it turn around and come back or does it go all the way through to Laskin Road?
Excuse me?
When the school bus comes down Maxey Drive from Virginia Beach Boulevard, does it turn around and come back or does it go all the way through to Laskin Road? Because you can't see it on there, but if you go straight down Maxey Drive, it takes you all the way to Laskin Road?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Sometimes school bus come down here and come this way, he gotta wait. And then sometime he get frustrated, come the other way, Laskin come down this way, still can come out. Either way, you gotta come to these streets. We're adjacent to both streets, we blocked there, Maxima and Virginia Beach and Laskin.
I understand, please don't take this the wrong way, I understand your concern, but we do have to remember it is a public street. So the, so my thing to you would be, you need to contact the city school system so they can contact these people to make sure the street's kept clear for the school buses. You know what I'm getting at? That needs to happen because it is a public street, they can pull in and out anytime they want to on that, from that auto shop. But I think it might be best for the parents, contact the city school system, tell them that what's going on, so it's blocking the buses. I want to think about that.
Go ahead. Yes.
I just want to say something to everybody up here real quick. If you'd look at page three on our app, in the application for agenda item number seven, you can see that Maxey Drive is considerably narrower than say Village Road, which is to the right. And he has absolutely valid concerns, like I said, I've driven down there, but I go back to what Commissioner Weiner said, this is something that, you know, you've brought attention to this now, which was good. And I think it's going to be important for the city to help police that street a little bit more to make sure that the adjacent property owners aren't parking their cars in the right of way and making it difficult for vehicles to get past. Because like I said, I have, I've been there, I've used that garage before and it's tight. And then, I mean, you can look, you can see how much the road is pinched on the Virginia Beach Boulevard end and how it starts to widen out when you get to the end of that property. So, so yeah, you know, however this vote ends up going, I think you coming down will have some benefit, future benefit on traffic on that road.
Jimmy? Did something on the van trip sort of catch your eye?
If you look on page three in the evaluation, there's a comment from Traffic Engineering that states that 10-foot dedication along Maxey Drive will be required as well as street improvements and that will be discussed in more detail at Site Plan Review.
Okay.
Okay, so that's good.
Do you understand?
Yes.
Okay.
So that, yeah, so there's, should be some extra give on that.
Let me add, I don't know if it's in the conditions or not, but if there isn't a condition on our application that says there will be no parking in the public right of way in conjunction with this project at 1888, it should be on there because there will not be any parking there because it will be landscaped and that's where the fence will be. But it's a little bit disingenuous, and not disingenuous, but it's a little bit hard to hold us hostage for something that's taking place from a property owner next door that's causing the problem, not us. Ours, we think, is a good application for that piece of property and your staff has agreed. And with that one other condition, if you want to add it to it, again, we're in total agreement with the conditions.
That would, I think that would be great, that would probably make the neighbors happy if we could add that condition into that application. That'd be great. There are no more speakers, we will close this for discussion amongst the Commissioners.
What district is this in?
You.
Oh, Smart.
It's all about you today.
I tell you, when I looked at this application, I was actually kind of taken back by the elevation of this building. I, for one, love this type of architecture and when I saw it, I was like, this will be the nicest looking building for a number of blocks in that area and I think it's going to be a huge improvement in changing the look of that area. And I do agree with the applicant, I appreciate you coming down, I really do, because that is a, that's a tough road and like I said, I think you brought some light to that subject and hopefully by you coming down, there'll be some improvement that you'll see there. But I'm inclined to approve this application as it stands with, I like the extra condition saying that there will be no parking in the public right of way by any of the app, or visitors, I'm going to word that to this business.
Jimmy, I have a question for you, I think, and unfortunately, I was not on the van trip, I was out of town, but somewhere along the line, I thought I heard that you all recognized that there was a problem with the neighbor and the way he had his cars parked. Am I incorrect with that or no?
We, nothing was mentioned at the van trip in regards to that.
Okay, maybe, yes.
I believe it was the cars that were inside the compound.
Oh.
Many of them, there was nothing, there was no landscaping to cover that up, is what we discussed.
So, but you all looked into that or are you going to look into that? Sorry.
Your question was if we were going to be looking into the screen requirements for the adjacent, we can certainly look into that.
Yeah, I think that, that might probably also help them.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
A point of order, I should have abstained on agenda item five, as I mentioned to you that I was going to do.
Right.
So I would like to record to reflect that I abstain on the vote on item, agenda item number five.
Okay.
Because, because my law firm's involved and not me, but, and one of my partners is a partner in the, in the project.
So, Mr. Edman, did you speak on agenda item number five?
I didn't.
Okay, and you would like to change your vote to an abstention?
Yes.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion, I'd make a motion to approve agenda item number, I'm sorry, is it seven?
Seven.
With the added condition of no parking in the right of way.
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Weiner. Call for the question. Oh, I'm sorry?
I also need to disclose here that the applicant's listed Town Bank again and the same disclosure I had previously, Planning Commission doesn't make any, only makes recommendations, final decisions made at council. I have no interest in this property, I don't know the applicant and I will be voting.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I need to make the same statement and echo what Mr. Ripley just said, that I'm director of Town Bank Beach Board, don't have any interest in this property, but I will abstain, not abstain from voting.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we have a motion made by Commissioner Hudson, seconded by Commissioner Weiner. Great, votes open.
Sorry, I pushed the wrong button this time. Lost man.
It leaves by a vote of seven to two, agenda item.
I need to change my vote on this.
Seven to two.
Can we re-vote?
You're a mess, man.
I'm a mess.
What are you doing? Mike's having a tough day.
Tough day.
Votes open again.
Okay. Got to re-vote.
Do it one more time.
Mr. Horstley?
Redman? Is it? By vote of nine to zero, agenda item number seven, Jones at 1888 LLC, has been approved.
Great. Thank you, thank you. Is there any other business?
One more item?
We have one more.
I'm sorry, it's a new job for me, y'all.
The last item is item number eight, this is Zaldi Viar, an application for a subdivision variance, section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations on property located at 1225 General Street, Suite B in the Kentsville District. Is there a representative here for this application? If you could state your name and the microphone for the record, sir?
Good afternoon to everybody. Hello. I am Zaldi Viar and I am the father of the owner of the said property by the power of, power of attorney given by my son because he's right now that Hawaii in duty as a military. Served the county. And this is my realtor to present us also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, council members, thank you for seeing us today. I'm Leela Olson with Beach South Realty and I represent my client who, like he said, he is military in Hawaii. We're here requesting a variance permit for this property for which of it, first of all, my client didn't even know we had an issue with plat and then variance. We put the property for sale last year in August, actually September, and by December we got a buyer only to find out that we had this issue and lost the buyer. My client has put over $20,000 on repairs and improvements in the property because it was poorly managed while he was gone and he has pulled loans through his father and himself and he's losing money as a result of it. And we've tried to do as much as we could to improve the property and the neighborhood because it was affecting the appearance. So in that note, once we find out that, we applied for plat and we hired, we hired a, what do you call that? The company?
The engineer.
And we, we got the plat, we got the plat approved, but now that we need variance, we need your help to move forward. We understand that the property land is smaller than the rest of it, but that's how it's been since 1950s. And when this property was deeded to my client, well, not to my client, like three, four clients ago, or buyers, was 1988 and it has never been an issue until now. So we're trying to understand how can, you know, why we are in block right now when this has been like this since 1950s. And to our luck, the new buyers that right now we have under contract after the one that we lost, it's actually a family. They have the mother renting the front unit and the father with kids on the back unit, which will not affect like before, only having different people renting where it would affect any people who live there or if there's any opposing people saying like rentals coming and going. So with that being said, we're hoping that we can get this passed and my client can move on. And with him being deployed and having some other family issues and financial distress, now the father and mother involved on that distress too, we're hoping everybody can move on and the new buyer has been sticking with us. As Jimmy knows, they've been very good complying and everything, they've been with us for four months now waiting for this to, to move forward. That's all I have to say for now, any questions?
Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll get back with you.
We do also have three speakers in opposition. Like I said, the first would be Yvonne Mills, could you please come to the podium? If you could state your name for the record too.
Yvonne Mills. Hello there, everybody.
Welcome.
I actually reside on General Street and the property in question is actually two doors down from where I stay. I've always have had a problem with that house. And what I want you to understand is, the home that I'm in now is a family home. It's a home that my father had built at one time, there was all single-family homes and my grandfather actually was the owner of General Street. He sold all pieces to it. And like I said, growing up, it was all single-family homes. I married, moved away, and one day I came home and I'm like, what is this? Why would, why did this house come into this nice neighborhood sideways? So I've always had a problem with it and, like I said, it's an eyesore. I don't, I don't know why the city even allowed this house to be built sideways. It's the first thing that I noticed when I came home. So I've always had a problem with it. My, my father has had a problem with it. I actually have six houses, there's about 18 houses on that street, I believe, maybe, maybe 15. Six of those homeowners are my family. They also oppose this as well. So, like I said, being the fact that it's not, it hasn't been properly recorded, it's not up to city code, I'm opposing it, I've always opposed it.
Okay. We have any questions for Mrs. Mills?
I have a question. How, when were your houses built on, on General Street?
1968.
1968, okay. All right.
Okay, yes.
Exactly what are you opposed to? I mean, you're opposed to this person getting a variance, what would be this, where do we go from there? I mean, do they tear the house down? I mean, I'm trying to understand what you're opposing.
Well, I, what I'm opposing is I, I don't like the fact that it was even approved in the first place, it's an eyesore. So I don't know what they would have to do because they just stated they put money into it, yes, they did. Before that period of time though, the roof was coming down, we've had people in and out, I mean, it was looking really, really bad. It still looks bad now, like I said, nice homes, you got a house sideways. I don't know whether they'll have to reduce the size of the garage or whatever, but like I said, I've always had a problem with it and I just wanted the city council to know that. We've always opposed the house. And I, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the solution would be, but I think if that's the code, they should adhere to whatever the city code is.
I can certainly understand that it was put in there and it's, when put in on a legally subdivided lot and... on a legally subdivided lot and all those things, and you, and it's, and it doesn't fit in with your neighborhood, but it's there. And so it'd be helpful if we had a solution that you saw, if we understood it. I understand you're opposed to it, I get that.
Just bring it, bring it to city code, reduce the size of garage, or whatever they need to make it. But the code is the code.
Thank you.
Well, I, I do think there, if I'm correct, there was a, there's a condition in it that should they ever decide to, whoever ends up owning this piece of property decides to redevelop or tear it down, am I, is that right, that it can only be a single-family put back there. So somewhere along the line, in 1970, this went up, and it just, nobody, nobody knew it, so I think that, but going, knowing that going in the future, should the new owners decide that they don't want the duplex anymore, then they will have to put in a single-family home to match what's on the street. Am I correct? Yeah. So.
Yeah.
Really all I had to say.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay. Will Mr. Robert B. Wilson, Sr., please come to the podium? You could state your name for the record as well.
Robert Wilson. I've been here for, I've been there for years. And I live, I live adjacent, across the street from the 1225 address. And at the time that they moved that building, we had, all the homes were single-family home. They, they put one adjacent to that, which was a two-family home, and they, the setback was supposed to be 75 feet. That home, that two-story home was already, it was built there. The one, the one that's 1225, there was no garage on that building at the time that they moved that building there. They built the, they put the garage on afterwards, after they moved, moved there. Now, it was R5, and it went from, it went, it was single-family, it was Zone R5. We didn't know that they had changed the zoning at that time, when they did it. And when we look, and when I look at what they have done, what gets me is that there was, there were no permits. Look at, if you check, if they checked the records, there were no permits on the, on adding the garage to the building. There were no permits when they, when they turn around and put siding on the building. And when they renovated the whole building. And at this time, at, at the present time, it's, it's like a two, it's a two-apartment building.
Right, it's a duplex.
It's, it's a duplex. Entrance from the back and entrance from the side. This is why we oppose it.
Understood. Anybody have any questions? Any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much.
We also have Yvonne Wilson representing New Light Civic League. Please come forward.
Hello. Let me correct something. I'm not representing the Civic League. I thought that was just for a matter of information. I'm here on my own.
All right.
I am a member of the United Civic League, though, but not representing them.
Okay.
What I wanted to talk to you guys about is that Robert and I built our home in 1963. We moved into New Light when it was a blighted area. We've seen you guys, along with Civic the Council, bring us from, what is it, those shell streets to two-lane houses, two-lane streets with water. And we sort of have a pride in what we've built there. And when it comes down to the off, I think it's R5, that I looked in the whole area, and it's zoned R5. When we first moved in there, it was single-family homes. There was a couple who tried to do a duplex in the area, and the Planning Commission wouldn't let them. And of course, when the two homes that are on General Street that are not single-family came, we tried to oppose that, but we couldn't because the zoning was already there. And I'm here to let you know that I don't know what the situation is with the houses across the street, this particular one, or why it, it was allowed to be put in there. We couldn't stop it, in other words, that's what, what I'm trying to say. And if there's any way we can work with them or with the Planning Commission to get something done a little bit different that would make us look different on General Street, there are the only two houses on that street that are not single-family are 1229, I think it is, and 1225. And if, I know Bob was talking about the, when I called, they said the garage was put there, and it was because of a setback. If there was some way we can correct this, that's what I would like to see the Planning Commission do. We don't want people to think that they can come in, put a house, and put anything in that area, and not follow the rules and regulations of what the Planning Commission of Virginia Beach says. That's why I wanted to speak out about this.
Great, yes.
You may not have the answers to this, but how long ago was that garage addition put on to that?
I don't know, but we do remember it being put on. I can't give you exact date.
I'm just wondering, was it prior to the existing owner?
I know there were about three people that owned that, I think.
Yeah, because he.
When it was, I can't, I couldn't say.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because this owner purchased it in 2010, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So prior to that, it's kind of, whatever happened really doesn't, you know, it just, he bought the property in 2010, and it was the way it was.
Yep.
So you can't hold him responsible for something that occurred prior, all those years. I mean, I understand.
And I understand that.
You know, so it's, he's kind of in a hard place with that. You know, he, he bought it, and, and now he's trying to.
It's he, could he couldn't?
He's, now he's trying to, to deed the proper, property legally so that it, it's in the deed book correctly, because somewhere along the line, that didn't happen.
But if it's in the deed book correctly, I've heard someone say that there was a stipulation that it was to be single-family.
If it's torn down.
Yes.
If, if it's torn down.
If they tear down, he'll have to, that house, what goes back to it will have to be a single-family home. Somewhere along the line, this took place, and it is just now getting recognized.
Hmm, okay.
Yes, so, so that's... Yeah, it just, it's one of those things that's just sort of happened.
He fell into it.
He, he bought the piece of property in good standing, and now he's trying to not own the property anymore. And under those circumstances, he has to have a variance because nobody ever legally plotted that piece of property. So we're all in agreement with you that, that in fact, that, that duplex probably should have never actually happened, but now it's here, and there's not a lot we can do with it, and they're trying to improve it. And so we're sort of trying to move forward with that.
And just for the record, the garage does meet all applicable setbacks, so it would have come through whenever it was built. It would have just been reviewed over the counter and issued a permit. And there are two permits that have been issued in the past year for renovations to this property, for siding and roofing. The garage meets all applicable zoning dimensional requirements, so it could have been built as a matter of right whenever it was built. And there are two permits that have been pulled in the past year for renovations to the structure. Thank you.
So if the garage is not what's causing the, the need for the variance, is it the width of the property?
Width, the width of the block.
Okay.
That the house sits on. So.
Anytime you're ready.
Okay.
Close the public.
Yes, we will close the hearing and open it for discussion. Yes.
What we, what is, one of the things we have to think about here, and I know we're talking about a house, but we are talking about a variance, request for variance to the lot width, not the, not the structure, the lot width. And staff is, is pretty good here on the evaluations.
Hold on, one second. Yes, we need to let the applicant speak. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
No, no, my.
This is not an excuse or anything, but when my applicant bought the property, like you stated, it was like this, it was in 1988 that, it was Harris Freeman and Helen Freeman that deeded the property instead of recording the plat. Therefore, it's been like that, passed through three buyers, my client was the fourth one, and he was never told that is something wrong with it. And when he bought it, he was in his mid-20s, had just started his family, and I do believe somewhere along, when he closed the property, somebody did not explain to him, he's by indebted property, not recorded. Therefore, to his defense, he did everything against, he did everything, you know, to comply with the law. Secondly, Mr. Wilson mentioned that the lot, the lot was not large enough. It, again, like they stated, it's something that it was built and permitted like that, therefore, we cannot do nothing about it. And we understand there's a condition moving forward that if something has happened to this property, it can only build as a second, as a residential property, not the duplex. And then for the garage and permits, there has been permits for everything, and there has been licensing and all of that stuff, or all the work that we've done in the house. I understand your concern, saying the house was not maintained properly a couple of years ago. It's because my client was in Hawaii, and the property management, like I said before, did not notify my client for everything that was going on. Therefore, they had to put, to be exact, $27,000 till to date since last August. So we have done everything that we can, according to the law and the city, to make sure that this does not affect the neighborhood nor the property. Thank you, and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. All right, we'll close the hearing now, and we'll open it for discussion. Commissioner Weiner?
Yes, um, okay. Again, like we had, what we're going to think about here, I understand about the structure, but what this is, is a variance to the lot width. And like I said, I was getting ready to say, staff has hit it on the head here, due to specific circumstances of the request, and the fact that the adjacent property is under different ownership, staff finds the applicant's claim of hardship compelling and recommends approval. That right there, and what they've had to go through, and basically what's happened, is not their fault.
Yes, Commissioner Redman?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the application.
I had a question.
Yes.
So, we keep saying that if they want to, if they, doing what we're getting ready to do, it looks like, and they were to take down the building, they would have to put up a single-family unit. But in, I'm understanding that if we recommend approval of the subdivision variance for the property to be zoned R5 residential duplex district, then we are giving them subdivision variance to do just that anytime, at any time, correct? So if the house comes down, they now have a subdivision variance to put in, or am I wrong? That's what I need to understand.
Sure, not, can you hear me?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Not if there is a specific condition prohibiting a duplex.
So we would have to put a specific condition in here to prohibit that.
Correct, and that's what staff has recommended.
Got it.
For your consideration.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Second.
I just want to make sure that's clear.
There's a motion? Okay. We have a motion made by Commissioner Redman, seconded by Commissioner Weiner. Weiner.
Who does that?
By a vote of 9 to 0, Agenda Item Number 8, Zaldi VR, has been approved.
Okay, is there any further business? If none, on behalf of my fellow commissioners, I would like to thank everyone for attending today, and the planning director and his staff for their excellent work in preparing today's agenda.
Once again.
Meeting adjourned. Meet.